30 PM. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Watson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Stand. Face the flag. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of items to report back out of closed session. For claim number 242517, the vote was approved with a motion by Mr. Trunkie and a second by Mr. Watson to reject the claim. The vote was five to zero. And for claim number 24257 in a closed session on a motion by Mr. Watkins and a second by Ms. Cooper, the vote was approved with five As, zero noes. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for May 20th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the governing board for May 6, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a vote? All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to our hearing session. I think what everyone is here for is our very exciting Classified Employees of the Year for 2025. So we, without further ado, we will get that started off. And I think I'll turn it over to Dr. Hawkins.
Well, we're very excited about tonight. I love seeing all the classified people and being able to honor them because they really are the unsung heroes of our district. They quietly work, oftentimes in the background. They do things that we don't recognize that they do, but they sure do make our lives easier because they do them. And I'm so pleased that we have so many wonderful, wonderful people in our district that do those jobs. You're going to see all of them tonight who were represented and elected by their friends and colleagues and people at the schools and in their departments. There are hundreds of them out there. And I just want to thank all of them and thank all of you for being here to honor them. So, Dr. Brunner.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hawkins. And yes, we are very excited to recognize our Classified Employees of the Year. So we're going to ask our site administrators, we're going to go alphabetical by school. So if you want to start lining up a few of you at a time, and if you are being honored, please come up with your site leader and they would like to say a few words about you.
Come on down. Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Licoroni, Principal at Bridgeport, and I'm happy to be here with Mrs. Stanley as well as our Classified Employee of the Year, Mr. Hosway Gutierrez. Excuse me, congratulations. Mr. Hosway is professional and dedicated every day at Bridgeport. He treats all staff, students, and community members with respect and kindness. Our school site is clean, organized, and safe because of Mr. Gutierrez's hard work and leadership. He leads the other custodians in doing their jobs well, and he looks for ways to improve the site. Mr. Hosway responds quickly to staff requests and complies with the variety of needs of a large school with four special education classes. In addition, Mr. Hosway believes in teamwork. He expects his team to work hard, communicate, and do their best. He models those expectations with his team, his admin, and all the other adults on campus who depend on him on a daily basis.
Mr. Gutierrez, I call him Jefe. The other custodians in following safety regulations, and he helps them follow the rules and expectations for site safety, too. He works together to solve problems and concerns brought to him. So this is a big thing, too. This is his first year at Bridgeport, and he was chosen as the Classified Employee of the Year. Jose has already established trusting relationships. Staff knows him, that knows that he is a dependable person. He knows, they know that he will fulfill their needs. Hosway will respond quickly and kindly. Hosway is cooperative and friendly. He doesn't just keep the site clean and safe, he also participates in check-in, check-out with our students to help support the students who need a caring adult to talk to. Hosway makes a difference in many ways, in the lives and the staff and the students, by supporting them every day. Congratulations, Hosway, and happy early birthday to my-
Hosway, just a minute. We're going to set up, if the board would get a approval crystal and a certificate from Ms. Blanco, then you'll be set up to hand these out. We're going to ask all of our honorees tonight to come by, say hello, congratulations with the board members, but stay till the end so we can take a big group picture. Okay? Well, you might want to stay, too. Okay? Just one second. You just stay here.
You're at Early Learning Academy for the preschool program. Katie Perry is our Honoree of the Year. Katie is dedicated para-professional who lights up every room with her energy and passion for the job. Her commitment to meet students where they are developmentally and supporting their continued growth makes her a vital part of the team. Her interactions are always positive, constructed, and tailored to meet the unique needs of each student. Katie consistently shows initiative in all situations, addressing tasks and challenges without being asked. Whether supporting her students, problem-solving on the spot, or following through on her commitments, she is always ready to provide support. Katie is incredibly proactive in anticipating the needs of her students, finding creative ways to help them understand new content and master new skills. She is constantly working to ensure each student has the tools and understanding they need to succeed. Katie's contributions extend beyond the classroom she is assigned to. She supports other classrooms and the entire site by stepping in whenever help is needed. Her positive relationships with families are a testament to her welcoming nature, always interacting with parents in a friendly and approachable manner. Katie also plays an active role in staff community, participating on the social committee, planning, and advocating for students and staff through her union involvement. A natural leader, Katie consistently demonstrates excellent judgment and creativity when faced with challenges. Her ideas are always thoughtful and practical, and when lead teachers need support, Katie is there, ready to lend a hand. Additionally, Katie has taken on an important role of mentoring new para-professionals, helping them learn the skills needed to be successful in their roles. Katie's presence is one of positivity, flexibility, and team spirit. She embodies the values of teamwork, enthusiasm, and respect that USD holds dear. Her ability to support, inspire, and collaborate make her escape the ordinary, making her an outstanding choice for Employee of the Year.
Ms. Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Merle Sony, and I'm the proud principal of Cedar Creek Elementary. I would like to start off by congratulating all of our Classified Employees of the Year and thank them for their unwavering dedication to our staff, students, and their families. I am here tonight to honor and celebrate Cedar Creek Elementary's Classified Employee of the Year, Mrs. Jennifer Seymour. Mrs. Seymour is an absolute joy to work with. As a special education paraeducator, Mrs. Seymour exemplifies the best of what it means to serve. She serves with love, passion, and purpose. She embodies inclusion, support, and individualized care. Anytime you walk into Mrs. Seymour's room, she is working with students, and you can feel the love and support she gives each and every one of the students she works with. She is there, I'm sorry, she is there to encourage students to overcome challenges or simply being the steady presence offering kindness and reassurance. Mrs. Seymour is a guiding light in our school community. She always makes herself available wherever she is needed. In fact, about two weeks ago, there was a student who was having a difficult time emotionally. Mrs. Seymour knew exactly what to do. She gave the student the space she needed, but stayed close enough to ensure the student was supervised and felt supported. Once the student was ready to talk, Mrs. Seymour jumped right in and was there for the student. When we have staff members who are absent, Mrs. Seymour never hesitates to step in and support. Her work is not easy, but it is meaningful. This is a good reminder that behind every success story is someone who believed, who encouraged, and who never gave up. And for so many students, that person has been Mrs. Seymour. Today, we celebrate not just the role Mrs. Seymour holds, but the positive impact that she has made. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Seymour, our Classified Employee of the Year. Thank you for being a champion.
All right, good evening again. My name is Tanaz Brunner. I'm the Director of Human Resources, and I'm representing our district office. And I wanted to read a little bit about our Classified Employee of the Year, Michelle Hugo. The Human Resources Department is proud to recognize Michelle Hugo as our District Office Classified Employee of the Year. Michelle exemplifies outstanding service in every aspect of her role, always providing exceptional customer service and support with kindness, positivity, and unwavering dedication. As our Classified Substitute Coordinator, she not only knows each employee by name, but also understands their strengths and backgrounds, ensuring that school sites are staffed with the best possible matches for student success. Her commitment goes far beyond the typical workday. She is up before dawn and often working into the evening to fill vacancies and support our school communities. Michelle began her journey with SUSD in 2002, serving in multiple roles, but also contributing as a dedicated parent herself. As she prepares to retire this August, which we're very sad by, alongside her husband Vaughn, we thank her for her years of service, compassion, and excellence. Michelle, you have truly been a bright light in our district, and you will be deeply missed. And one other thing, while you may have gotten an A as an employee, I received an F as your boss because I left your flowers at home.
I'm Sam Ford, Principal at Emblem Academy. This is Christine Ivy, Assistant Principal, and we are proud to be here today to recognize an exceptional member of our Emblem family, Maggie Mars, our Classified Employee of the Year. Maggie serves as a paraeducator, and her dedication to our students is nothing short of extraordinary. She has an incredible gift for connecting, guiding, and encouraging students in a way that fosters both confidence and academic success. Every morning, Maggie helps students transition smoothly into school mode, creating a calm, focused start that sets the tone for a productive day. She's not just consistent and reliable, she's proactive. Maggie truly goes above and beyond for all students at Emblem. Whether it's on the playground, helping resolve a conflict, or in the classroom, offering extra support, Maggie is always tuned in, ready to step in with kindness, care, and calm leadership.
Her presence is a positive force on campus. She's professional, friendly, and radiates a warmth that students and staff alike gravitate towards. Teachers appreciate her insight, her perspective, and communication, often noticing when a child might be struggling and ensuring that the right supports are in place. If you've worked at Emblem for any length of time, you know that Maggie's heart is fully in it for our students. And if you're a teacher lucky enough to have her supporting your kids, you know what a gift that is. She is simply put one of the kindest, most dedicated people you'll ever meet. She consistently goes above and beyond expectations. Maggie and I go way back. We were little Emblem eaglets together, and I cannot tell you what a pleasure it is to be able to do this job with you. And I thank you so much for everything you do for our community and our students. Congratulations on being Emblem Academy's Classified Employee of the Year. You absolutely deserve it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jamie Rutter, the Principal of James Foster Elementary School, and I am honored to recognize our Classified Employee of the Year, Lori Murray. I am sure there are many of you in this room who have had the pleasure of working with Lori Murray. She has served our district for over 30 years. Lori is truly the heart of our school. She is warm, welcoming, and incredibly nurturing. Whether you're a student needing comfort, a parent with a question, or a staff member needing support, Lori is always there with a kind word, a helping hand, and a genuine smile. She is also the queen of creating our independent study contracts and the master of attendance, keeping everything running smoothly behind the scenes when our students are absent. From making sure our students and staff are taken care of, to helping our days run seamlessly in the office, Lori does it with all of her heart. Lori has known most of our families for many, many years, and continues to provide care and support to multiple generations. She brings a sense of continuity and connection that makes our school feel like home. She creates a space where students feel safe and supported, and where staff know they can count on her. Her patience, consistency, and dedication make a difference every single day. Lori, thank you for being such a steady, loving, and essential presence on our campus. We are so lucky to have you. And I know she's retiring soon, but not just yet. We have some more time with her. Congratulations, Lori. It's very well deserved.
Good evening. I am Robin Desha, and I'm honored to present to you my Classified Employee of the Year, Gina Gordon. Gina is truly a superhero in disguise, supporting three kindergarten classes and 83 little learners with endless patience, a warm smile, and a heart of gold. It's hard to imagine wrangling that many humans every day, but Gina somehow makes it look effortlessly and even fun. Today, I witnessed her with one hand stop 83 children, make them stop running, walk, and get in a straight line for lunch. These are the superpowers she has. She is a master at running small groups, giving each child the focused attention they need to thrive. She even got all 83 of them to do their own self-portrait with paint. Her ability to connect with students and still maintain a cheerful attitude is nothing short of magical. If anyone ever doubted that magic exists in schools, they've clearly never seen Mrs. Gordon in action. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon, for taking such good care of our Huskies.
She's making me nervous, just to let you all know. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ernestine Aguilar. I'm the Principal at Highlands Elementary School, and today I have the great honor to present to you the one and only Joy Moreno from Highlands. So at the heart of our school community stands a remarkable individual whose presence makes a daily difference, our campus supervisor, Joy. With a steady hand, a bright smile, and innate ability to connect with students, staff, and families alike, she is truly the glue that helps hold our campus together. And like when I say the glue, like when you lose three out of five staff members, you need someone to hold everyone together, and that has been her this year. So, and you know, when you get a new principal at a school that needs direction, the first people that are there are the office managers, the custodians, and your campus supervisors. So she has walked our schedules with me and has sat endless hours making sure that we don't skip a beat when we have that transition. Her dedication to fostering a safe, supportive, and welcoming environment does not go unnoticed. Whether she is building trust with students, lending a hand to colleagues, or engaging with families in our broader community, her impact is both meaningful and lasting. For example, she's worked on all our PBIS signage. She's part of our PBIS team. She has learned so much about how to be a champion of our behavior interventions as the lead person out there who lead with hundreds of children at the same time during recess and lunch. I mean, teachers are awesome in the classroom that are contained, but you take a campus supervisor and put her out there to handle all those kids at the same time during unstructured time, and that is a champion as well. So we are incredibly fortunate to have such a committed and compassionate leader among us, someone who not only ensures our campus runs smoothly, but who also inspires respect, kindness, and connection in all she does. Thank you for being an essential and invaluable member of our team and a true role model for all of us. You're kind, like we tell everybody at Highlands. You're kind, you matter, and you belong at Highlands, and we appreciate you so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Peter Gaten. I'm the Director of Maintenance, Operations, Transportation, and Facilities. It's an absolute honor to stand before you tonight to recognize someone who has made a meaningful and lasting impact on our maintenance department, our 2025 Employee of the Year, Alex Acosta. Alex joined our team in November of 2021, and it didn't take long for us to realize that we had someone special. From the moment he arrived, he brought an attitude that said, "I've got this." And fortunately for us, he truly did. Alex is a go-to guy when something breaks, leaks, squeaks, or simply refuses to cooperate. Somehow, no matter the issue, he always finds a solution, whether it's a broken AC unit during a heat wave or a strange sound coming from the inside of the walls. Sorry, Nick. Alex approaches every challenge with skill, patience, and just enough humor to make even the toughest situations bearable. But what really sets Alex apart isn't just his technical expertise, it's his unwavering dedication to this team and to the people we serve. He doesn't just fix problems, he prevents them. He doesn't just show up, he steps up. And through it all, he brings a positive attitude that lifts everyone around him. As Suki Huthink, our Maintenance Secretary, so beautifully said, "Each day, he comes in with a cheerful smile that lasts throughout my shift, and that positivity makes a big difference." His commitment and hard work for the district is evident in everything he does. We are truly fortunate to have him with us. And it's not just about attitude, it's about action. Salema Garcia, our Assistant Director of Grounds and Custodial, shared, "Alex demonstrates exceptional responsibility as an employee. Whenever I encounter an emergency, he always prompt and effective in solving the problem." Our irrigation specialist, John Malarky, added, "Alex is an amazing asset to the team and a genuine pleasure to work with. His positive attitude shows how much he truly cares." Personally, I believe that with his leadership, work ethic, and character, there's greatness in Alex's future. Look out, look out, Sagis. Alex, we appreciate, incredibly grateful to have you on our team. Your hard work, reliability, and positive spirit make even the most challenging days a little easier. You truly embody what this award represents. So on behalf of our entire team, thank you for all you do.
It's with great pride and gratitude tonight that we honor Mrs. Kimberly Corpash as Mountain View Elementary School's Classified Employee of the Year. Mrs. Corpash serves as a resource paraeducator, and her impact on our school community is nothing short of exceptional. She's a constant source of positivity and support, always kind, patient, and compassionate toward students, especially those who need it the most. Mrs. Corpash approaches each challenge with a calm, solution-oriented mindset, and her collaborative spirit uplifts everyone she works with. Whether she is helping to gain, a student gain confidence in reading, or working alongside a teacher to adapt instructional materials, she does so with care, professionalism, and a genuine love for education.
We are incredibly fortunate to have Mrs. Corpash as part of our team. Her dedication, warmth, and unwavering support for students and staff alike make her a true asset to Mountain View Elementary and to our entire district. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Kimberly Corpash on this well-deserved honor.
All right, here we go. Ready? Right here. All right.
Good evening. I am Rose Villanueva, the proud principal of North Park Elementary School. It is truly an honor to recognize our 2425 Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Erica Villanueva. No relation to me, but honestly, I wouldn't mind. Mrs. Villanueva is not only an outstanding basis paraeducator, she is also our CSCA site rep. There are many great qualities and attributes that describe Ms. Erica, and tonight, I'm honored to share a few. Look, it's a bird! It's a plane! No, it's Super Erica! Super Erica can be spotted all over our campus doing amazing things to support students' social, emotional well-being and academic needs. She never hesitates to step in and support staff when needed. Her super smile is contagious. When she smiles, students and staff feel so welcomed, safe, and appreciated. She makes learning fun, and her smile brightens up our campus. Her warm smile motivates everyone to do their best. No matter what comes her way, she always has a smile on her face, which turns everyone's day around. Super Erica is super compassionate. It is so evident that she truly cares about all our students. Ms. Erica-
Ms. Erica is quick to help and listens without judgment. She responds to any situation with kindness and compassion, which in turn fosters trust and emotional safety, which helps resolve any situation at hand. Super Erica is super encouraging. Her positivity makes us all feel like we can accomplish anything. Our mission is to ensure all students learn at high levels and provide them with all the tools and strategies to be successful, and that is what Super Erica does. Super Erica always knows exactly what to say to lift others up and helps them believe in themselves and always reminds them of their strength and potential. Super Erica is fearless. She faces many challenges head-on without hesitation. No matter the situation, nothing seems to fluster her. When others are addressing a situation, here comes Super Erica to save the day. She inspires everyone around her without knowing it. She brings positive energy and warmth everywhere she goes. She makes everyone around her feel like they can accomplish anything. That's just what Super Erica does. Super Erica is light on her feet. As a basis paraeducator, she can go across campus in a flash. Startling me sometimes, like, "Where'd you come from?" But thank you. She seems to pop up even before we call her. She always finds the best way to help and support our students. She takes initiative. She is extremely reliable and dedicated. You don't even hear her coming. That's how super powerful she is. Ms. Erica, you are North Park's Super Erica. You truly have extraordinary powers that are used to support all students and ensuring they have a successful school year. Your ongoing commitment to the emotional and academic success of students is commendable. You have a huge heart. And it shows in everything you do. Thank you for always saving the day.
Just yummy. Can I just vote that we changed from alphabetical order? Just saying, have to go after Rose yet again. So Ms. Kay, I have no props, I'm sorry. Just words. Congratulations to all of the classified employees. Know that your work is not in vain and know that you are seen by all of us. My name is Ardrola Hamilton, and I am the very proud principal of Plum Canyon Elementary School. And before me, we have the beautiful Ms. Lisa Kay. I dare not say her last name because I respect her too much to butcher it. So our 2024/25 Classified Employee of the Year is Ms. Lisa Kay. As a dedicated special education paraeducator supporting our RSP program, Ms. Kay brings more than just her skills to our campus. She brings heart. Ms. Kay's generosity truly exudes from her. She gives the most valuable gift of all, her time. Whether it's adjusting her schedule to support students, stepping in wherever there is need, and there are many, our staying late to ensure everything is ready for the next day. Her flexibility and willingness to help are unmatched. Her quiet but powerful demeanor is evident in everything she does. Mrs. Kay doesn't seek the spotlight, but her presence is felt deeply. Through calm strength and quiet confidence, she builds trust with students and staff alike. Beyond her role as a paraeducator, Ms. Kay is known for her thoughtful spirit. She is always creating or making something special for the staff, not because she was asked, but because she noticed something about them or she saw a special need. I'm just gonna ad lib this. I am a very cold individual, and so I'm always cold. I either have a shawl or something, and Ms. Kay personally knit, crocheted, crocheted me a beautiful plum and lilac lap blanket for my office. And that's what I'm talking about. She responds with her kindness and her creativity. Mrs. Kay's compassion, attentiveness, and quiet acts of service uplift our entire school community. She is a shining example of the impact one person can make. We honor and celebrate Mrs. Kay today. Congratulations and thank you for all you do, and yes, she bleeds purple too.
Good evening, everyone. I am Nivea Navarres. I'm the principal at Rio Vista Elementary School, and Rio Vista is honored to celebrate our Classified Employee of the Year, Carla Delgado. And a little background about Carla. She is our office manager. She started out as an office assistant at Cedar Creek, one of the schools in our district. And that was 19 years ago. And 18 of her years in the district have been at Rio Vista Elementary School. So she's, yeah, and I met her last school year when I first started at Rio Vista. And when I first met her, I asked her, "Are you the oldest in your family?" Which it probably surprised her because she's not. But I told her, "You remind me of my eldest sister. And if you come from a big family like I do, you know that that's a very high compliment." The eldest sister is the coordinator, the glue, the one who makes sure everyone is where they need to be and somehow still has the energy to make it all feel special, and that is Carla. Carla is the heart of our school, truly. She is connected to every single part of our campus. If you need a report run, she's on it. A family that needs comforting, she's already had the conversation. Burritos for coffee with the principal, she will pick the best ones. A pocket chart ordered from Amazon, she will read all the reviews, and if it's not up to standard, she will return it. Her attention to detail is superb. She brings the highest quality of care and thoughtfulness to everything she touches, whether it's coordinating the Dodgers field trip, which was an attendance incentive that helped boost us to one of the top average daily attendance rates in the district, or, yeah, it's a big deal. Or driving to Olvera Street on the weekend to handpick our baile folclórico outfits for our dance group. Somehow, between calls and putting out a million fires a day, Carla still finds time to lift staff spirits and be present for students who are struggling. And I just went through something very tough, and the first person I called was Carla. So that just tells you. She even brings her extended family and her two daughters to the school to volunteer, which makes perfect sense because family is who Carla is. Carla, Carla, thank you for being the heart of our school and knowing what it takes to hold a Rio Vista family together.
I know we don't really get to say anything, but my mom and my dad are here, and I'm very blessed to still have them with me. When they would go and to my awards assemblies at school, I would always get McDonald's after, so guess where I'm going today?
That is a hard act to follow. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bolina, and it is my privilege to honor our Rosedale's Classified Employee of the Year, the one and only Ms. Tammy McDougall. But at Rosedale, we refer to her as Ms. Tammy. So that is what she's known to us. That's how I'm going to present her. So Ms. Tammy started at Rosedale as a campus supervisor, but let's be honest, she was more like the CEO of recess relations, negotiating peace treaties over basketballs and handballs and being requested by name like she was a celebrity at recess and lunch. Students from TK to sixth grade will tell you all the same thing, that Ms. Tammy just gets them. This year, she transitioned into her new role as a TK instructional assistant, and those tiny little humans fell for her faster than kindergartners racing for the swings. She didn't miss a beat. It turns out that being adored by 11-year-olds and four-year-olds and all the ages in between is Tammy's superpower. Sorry, I don't have a cape for you. I even asked the students to describe her, and the quotes just came in. So she really listens to me and gives good advice. This one was my favorite. She loves the sixth graders the most. And, but really, my favorite is, she loves helping kids. Tammy, thank you for showing up every day with heart, humor, and the kind of compassion that makes Rosedale shine. We're so lucky to have you and even luckier to celebrate you tonight. Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm Misty Covington. I'm the principal of Sky Blue Mesa Elementary School. This is Ms. Hodges. She's our fourth grade teacher at our school. And she gets a chance to work every single day with our Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Maria Caballero. We're so excited to recognize Ms. Maria today because she goes above and beyond, and she's always willing to help beyond her regular duties. She consistently demonstrates exceptional work performance. She shows flexibility and dedication. She actively seeks out additional activities to support all students within the classroom. I know Mrs. Hodges can attest to that. Her willingness to help whenever needed, her positive attitude and professionalism make her a reliable and valuable member of our team. Her years of experience in various educational settings have helped her to develop multiple strategies and techniques which she uses to help keep our students engaged and to support every single student on the campus. Maria treats all students with kindness and caring, and she fosters a welcoming and inclusive environment. She's collaborative. She strengthens the connections among staff and among our students. And in the classroom, she helps Mrs. Hodges build a classroom community. Everybody in Room 31 is a family. We are beyond fortunate to have her at Sky Blue Mesa because she makes a difference every single day, and we are thrilled to honor her tonight as our Classified Employee of the Year.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Cameron. I serve as the principal at Tesoro del Valle, and it's my honor to recognize our Classified Employee of the Year, Special Education Paraeducator, Terry Wibbles. Mrs. Wibbles personifies excellence, patience, and kindness in her role as paraeducator for our resource program. She works every day to ensure that all students have the support they need to learn at high levels. Whether she's reteaching a concept, offering a gentle nudge towards independence, or providing additional time and teaching support along with her calm presence in a busy classroom, she plays a key role in helping students grow academically, socially, and emotionally. She is quiet grace and deep humility. She never seeks the spotlight, but she makes a huge impact. Students trust her, teachers rely on her, and her calm, consistent presence helps make Tesoro a place where all children can thrive. She shows up, she steps in, she does what needs to be done, always with the same thoughtful care. Perhaps one of her most visible contributions is her morning welcome at the kindergarten gate. She's the warm smile and the reassuring voice that greets our littlest children, our TK and kindergarten students at the gate every morning. She's like the morning cup of coffee for our families, comforting, necessary, and capable of preventing meltdowns, both for children and adults. And I've seen it. I've seen it. It's magic in action. Parents and children alike have come to rely on Mrs. Wibbles to get the day started right. So tonight, Terry, we celebrate you for your dedication, for your kindness, and the many quiet ways that you make a difference every single day. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Subette, the principal at West Creek Academy.
Hi, I'm Dina Ticos, the Assistant Principal.
And we are thrilled to recognize our Library Media Specialist, Mrs. Jenny Sawyer. Mrs. Jenny Sawyer has been West Creek Academy's Library Media Specialist for the last 11 years and a Library and Media Specialist in Sagas Union School District for the last 25 years. She is a leader amongst our school as the CSCE representative as well as our Classified Employee for Site Council. Mrs. Sawyer is with the students throughout their entire journey at West Creek Academy. She literally meets them when they're in TK. She's with them every single week, all the way through until they end sixth grade. So she really gets a chance to know them very, very well and connects with them and makes such an impact. Mrs. Sawyer excels at connecting with students or connecting the students with the book that they just cannot put down. She promotes a deep love of reading through her knowledge, presentation of books, and various programs through her innovative Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame is where students read a book where one is a classic, one is an award-winning book, and one is a nonfiction. And once they have a chance to read the books, she'll take a picture of them with their teacher and display it in the library.
Ms. Sawyer is committed to maximizing their experience and academic growth in the library through lessons and by supporting students in selecting books of interest at their reading level and enjoying it until they return the following week to visit, or two weeks later, to visit the library. Ms. Sawyer's advocacy for a diverse library collection ensures that all of the countries that are represented on our campus have books available so that our students can learn more about their own culture or other cultures that they see around them. Ms. Sawyer offers students opportunities to have access to new books that are updated or relevant to the current day, and she works really hard at maintaining a library that aligns with the grade levels, areas of instruction, and students' interests as well.
Mrs. Sawyer's enthusiasm for literature and reading is contagious. Thank you, Mrs. Sawyer, for brightening all of our days at West Creek Academy, for your positivity, your wealth of knowledge about books, and really making the time to make our school library be the very best it can be. Congratulations on being our honoree this evening.
All right, before we have a
Before we have all of our honorees come up here and take a picture together, we have one last award to give out. Each year, when, once we get all of the nominees from all of the different school sites, we, a committee takes a look at what has been written about each person. And we select one person from the honorees to represent the school district as the Classified Employee of the Year. And this year, that person is Katie Perry. All right. So if we could have all of our honorees come on up here, and we'll take one big giant picture.
I know, you guys don't want to do it, but you have to. You have to have the photographs for the home. I get to do it every two weeks. So you're used to it.
I know. But you got to show off that cape.
And then if I can have you this way.
Why don't we go ahead and take a quick recess? We'll reconvene at 7:28. We'll give people an opportunity to take pictures and head out to McDonald's to celebrate. If we're heading out, let's go ahead and take one more picture.
Missing Patty.
Oh, you're right. And we're missing Matt, or Mr. Watkins, I'm sorry. Oh, no, Mr. Watkins is here. Ms. Cooper, Ms. Cooper. Did I call you Watkins? I'm sorry. Watson, Watson.
I think you need to page Mrs.
Oh, thank you. Must have fallen off.
Yep.
While I was over there hugging everybody.
Okay, let's move on to our advanced written request to address the board regarding agenda and non-agenda items. Board bylaws 9320, 9322, and 9323 each speak to the process used by the governing board to allow for public comment during its meetings. The bylaws are in compliance with the Brown Act and other applicable law. Board bylaw 9323 specifically outlines the process for members of the public to address the governing board on agenda and non-agenda items that are within its subject matter jurisdiction. Members of the public wishing to address the governing board are asked to do so, or sorry, asked to do the following prior to the start of the public comment section of the meeting agenda to ensure that appropriate time is allotted to all interested speakers and topics. The speaker must either complete a speaker card for each item they desire to speak on and/or notify the assistant to the superintendent of each item if attending the meeting in person. This notification is requested to allow the board president to consistently implement public comment guidelines provided in Board bylaw 9323. Members of the public wishing to make public comment via telephone or virtual meeting software must notify the assistant to the superintendent via email, not later than 4:30 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting, to ensure that the person has the same opportunity to address the board under Board bylaw 9323 as those who are in attendance. Each speaker is allowed three minutes per topic for public comment. The total time allotted for each topic is 20 minutes. Depending on the number of persons wishing to be heard on a single topic, the governing board may adjust the time allotted for each speaker or the total time allocated to the topic issue. The president of the board may take a poll of speakers for and against the topic issue to determine how best to allocate or allot time on each topic issue. Members of the public who wish to address the board do so either in person or via Zoom. A speaker may read a statement from an individual not in attendance. However, their allotted speaking time will not be extended to reach such as, to read such a statement. A timer visible to all attendees will be used to manage time during public comment. Any speaker who exceeds their allotted time will have their mic cut off. To ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the board, any member of the public who utilizes a translator shall be provided at least twice the allotted time to address the board, unless simultaneous translation equipment is used to allow the board to hear the translated public testimony simultaneously. Please remember that state law prevents the board from acting on any matter not listed on the agenda or from discussing any such matter in detail. With our Saugus Teachers Association, Ms. Linda Valdez. Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Public comments. I just wanted, I just wanted to see if we were all paying attention. Thank you. Thank you all. I'm glad everybody was paying attention. Thank you.
Just kidding.
Just kidding. Another 20 minutes? No, I'm kidding. Okay, we have Jody Paris, followed up by Wendy Katana.
Dear members of the Saugus Union Board, my name is Jody Paris, and I'm currently teaching writing as a TOSA at both Rosedale and Highlands. As I reflect and repair to retire after 37 fulfilling years in elementary education, K through sixth graders. Okay, now, now I can't see. Sorry about that. Oh, my gosh, three minutes. Okay. I want to take a moment to extend my heartfelt thanks to each of you and to the entire district. Team, entire district team for the past 24 years. My years before Saugus were spent in LAUSD, Last Virginus, and Westside Union School District. But my fondest years are right here in Saugus. My journey here has been at Mountain View Highlands and Rosedale, learning and growing with excellent administrators like Chris Hamlin, Susan Bender, Katie Dempsher, Elizabeth Bellina, Ernestina Aguilar, Misty Covington, Jamie Redder, Sue Beth, Davis Steppner, Cheryl Cameron, Rosevian Nemeva, and many more at the district level. I have also had the pleasure of working as a team with Dr. Judy Fish, Dr. Joan Lucid, and I'm lucky enough to have ended my career with Dr. Colleen Hotkins. In US, in SUSD, I have taught K through fifth and have been a TOSA for the, for intervention and writing. Teaching has not just been a profession, but a true calling. Over the past three and a half decades, two and a half here being at Saugus, I have had the privilege of working alongside dedicated colleagues, enthusiastic students, and a community that values education. The trust placed in me to help shape young minds has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I am deeply grateful for the opportunity the district has provided me for professional development or collaboration and for growth. Your commitment to maintaining high standards for both staff and students has made it a joy to be part of this educational. Though I will be, though I will miss the daily rhythm of the classroom, I carry with me a lifetime of memories, lessons, and pride in the work we have done together as a team. Thank you for supporting educators like myself and for making the district a place where teachers are empowered and students can front. With sincere gratitude. Thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement. Wendy Katana, followed up by Jessica Summers.
Good evening, board members. My name is Wendy Katona. I'm a preschool special education teacher at Saugus Union School District. I speak tonight on behalf of myself, my colleagues, educators who are deeply committed to our students but increasingly burdened by responsibilities that are becoming unmanageable without adequate time and support. Our dual role as teachers and case managers. In our district, we not only serve students as teachers, but we are also case managers for our students with caseloads numbers reaching to 29 as of last school year. As case managers, we're the central point of contact for families and full IEP teams. We are responsible for ensuring services are delivered, compliances met, and communication is ongoing with families. Alongside teaching, we complete, we complete state mandated assessments, write frequent progress reports, and manage multiple types of IEPs for our entire caseloads of students which are all detailed, time-consuming, and non-negotiable, unaddressed classroom realities. We have now reached up to 14 students in each of the two classes that we teach. Safety becomes a concern because while our only afternoon paraeducator is occupied with diapering, the teacher is left alone with over a dozen young children, many of whom display challenging impulsive behaviors. BCBAs are not assigned to our preschool program to support us. As teachers, we understand that these challenges are not a reflection of children themselves, but rather a sign of the support that they need. And it is our responsibility to provide that support, just as we would for any other child in our district. Time is being taken away when we need more. The MOU appears to eliminate the limited protected time currently in place, time which is already insufficient to meet the demands of our roles as case managers and SDC teachers. Many of us already work through lunch, after hours, and on weekends just to meet compliance under our current contract. Last year, three committed teachers resigned under the weight of the demands presented here. These workload demands continue to affect our current staff's physical health, mental well-being. These workload demands continue to affect our current staff's physical health, mental well-being, and time with our families. Elsewhere, case management is recognized as a separate paid position and outside of our SIPA, caseloads this high at the special education preschool level are unheard of. Please reconsider. The proposed MOU seems to further threaten the integrity of our programs, the success of our students, and the well-being of the teachers who serve them. Our students deserve better. This proposal seems to be removing the already inadequate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for listening. We greatly appreciate your support.
Thank you. Jessica Summers, and that followed up by Kelly Hecker.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Summers. I've been a speech-language pathologist with the district in preschool since 2011. It is no surprise that many of us have gotten into the teaching profession for similar reasons. We love kids, we want to make an impact on students, and of course, the school schedule. A workday of roughly seven thirty to three, summer breaks, and various breaks throughout the year. We have had this schedule for as long as most of us can remember. We rely on this schedule. It's purpose for those of us that have children, vibrant social lives, secondary jobs, caring for elderly parents, and mental health. Work-life balance is important. Recently, the district has made a unique proposal for our youngest students that impacts the teachers and staff that work with those students. The district has proposed that the preschool staff work from eight fifteen to three forty-five, that is forty-five minutes past most other schools in the district. This switches to accommodate changes to our preschool classes and busing, an issue that the preschool committee was told not to worry about when initially discussing these modifications. We have many concerns regarding this time change. Teachers do not have flexibility to change their hours or take an hour of sick time to accommodate doctor's appointments, extracurricular activities, and children's activities. Many doctors' offices do not take appointments after four. Therefore, we will be forced to take half days for a four PM appointment. If we are going to, if we have any ongoing medical issues, these appointments may be monthly or even weekly, quickly eating into our sick time. We have new teachers who are still attending classes that begin at four in Northridge. This change will essentially make them ineligible to continue working with us and finishing their credential. We have paras that will be forced to leave preschool due to second jobs or children to pick up from preschool. Sogus's own classified staff member of the year could potentially lose her jaw or leave her job because she has to pick up her daughter from school. It takes a very special person to work for a preschool and its many intricacies. We cannot lose these people. We have children that attend extracurricular activities that will have a significant impact on their development, tutoring, special education services, sports. My own child will not be able to participate in baseball anymore because practice is at four. Who is to get him there? Are you going to be there when the tears begin to fall because he can't participate in his favorite sport with friends? Let's talk about this impact that it will have on our students. With a change in our program, we will have afternoon SEC classes. The students in the class have a developmental level of twelve to twenty-four months. Students that already have difficulty regulating emotions, communicating their needs, focusing and participating. Now let's add having a class during naptime. Tired toddlers equal big behaviors. Additionally, we stand here with seventeen days of school left, and we still don't have clarity on our programs or hours. Our paras have not even been notified of potential changes at all. They've only heard what little information we teachers have. It is unacceptable to have such a significant change this late in the year without transparency and clear communication. I know the district wants to be solution-based. We as a staff would love to continue to work with the district to come up with solutions that best meet the needs for the students and staff. Thank you.
Kelly Hecker. Kelly Hecker, followed up by Brianna Jones.
Right to start, okay. Sorry, hang on. Hi, my name is Kelly Hecker and I'm an early childhood special education preschool teacher. Beginning in January, the Bella preschool team was informed that changes would be made to our schedule for the following school year. Some members of our team were asked to represent us as part of the decision-making process as part of a committee. In this process, ideas and concerns were expressed with members of SST in an effort to prevent possible issues that would arise and in good faith collaborate with the district in order to find the best possible plan for our school and students. Throughout this process, the team has been provided with differing and vague information and what feels like empty promises to repair the broken trust that resulted from the move from Santa Clarita Elementary. In the end, the Bella team reviewed a district-created MOU that in many ways did not reflect that process that we had believed to be collaborative. Little to no negotiations took place following the district's proposal, and in the end, when the team asked for a workday that more closely resembled the rest of the school, we were met with a seemingly retaliatory response. If we were to adjust our start and end time, not add or remove time, just adjust it, we would be expected to work for two additional hours a week in order to receive extra duty, extra pay, while the rest of the district is only required to work one. This was the district's idea of finding solutions for teachers advocating for reasonable working conditions. We are being told that our teaching hours are being drastically changed due to transportation, busing for our students. Regardless of universal dismissal, we are working considerably later than the rest of the district. In addition to this, the time for IEPs is being reduced, and now we will be required to do this after our three fifteen class dismissal. How is this equitable for us as Bella special education preschool teachers? Today I had a meeting with an IEP team at three o'clock to go over needs for a student of mine. After this meeting, I go to pick up my toddler from daycare, I take him home, I make him dinner, I spend time with him, and then I have him attend his own service for his own IFSP. As an early childhood special education teacher, I understand how important early intervention is. So of course, that's a huge priority for me. All of this occurred just today before I could walk in his door into this board meeting. Now, if I now taught until three fifteen, how much more difficult would that be for me to continue being a case manager for my twenty-eight students, schedule meetings with service providers who also work at other locations and will be off earlier? Scheduling the amount of IEPs and meetings I'm responsible for on a yearly basis? Not even to look at my own family responsibilities now, considering how much later I will be off work. We all know teachers are off at three, but we don't go home at three. So if we're off at three forty-five, I can only hope I will make it home for dinner moving forward, if this is the district's idea of equitability for all of us. The district has presented an MOU for a program to be decided on that has not yet been fully developed, thought through, or explained. So we stand before the cabinet, the board, and our colleagues and the public tonight to ask for a meaningful collaboration, transparency, and communication.
Brianna Jones, followed up by Katie Perry.
Hello and good evening, board members, the cabinet, colleagues, and to our community members. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your time, for your support, and your commitment to the district and all of the students and families that we serve. The other day, I was asked, how are things going at Bella this year? When I kind of provided a general, been quite a year, answer reflecting on this question with my colleagues, many thoughts come to mind. And amidst the bustle of our first year in our very own early learning campus, we have welcomed and celebrated new teachers, new paras and staff to our preschool team, including the first preschool program specialist that's been specifically assigned to admin and support at our very own site, and for that, we thank you. We've endured a heartbreaking loss of our, one of our own very, one of our very own general education preschool teachers. And for those of you who don't know, this happened over this last winter break. It's about five months ago. We have been afforded many, many facility improvements, and for that, we thank you. We're thankful for the continued improvement at our vocate early learning. We have a fence around the playground to ensure the safety of our little ones. Thank you for that. We have a drinking fountain on the playground for our little ones to be able to get a drink of water independently. The campus has been beautified with landscape that makes it inviting for us to come to work every day. Thank you for providing that for us. Throughout this year, you have opened additional bathrooms on campus for the staff, and thank you for that. We have been provided an updated, organized, and inviting workroom and staff room, and it's beautiful, and thank you for that. We appreciate that. The sinks in our children's bathrooms have been lowered to allow our children to be able to access and wash their hands independently. And we've been provided stepstools or ladders for the little ones to access the toilets to be able to independently toilet themselves, and for that, we thank you. Now, it's imperative for everyone to understand the level of care that's needed for the littlest ones that we welcome and serve each day at Bella. We have come so far this year, and yet there's uncertainty about the future of our program, especially for the next school year. We don't even know. As there has been stated effort to rebuild our team's morale along with administrative trust, this uncertainty brings with it increasing anxiety, frustration, and mistrust. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight. Thank you for your listening, and thank you for your collaboration.
Katie Perry, followed up by McKenna Withers.
This is like my Oscar speech, okay, guys? So first, I would like to start off by thanking my preschool family, our new addition to that family, our first-ever preschool program specialist, all the amazing preschoolers that I've had the opportunity to work with throughout the years, and the board and district for this massive honor. I am so humbled and grateful. I have a tendency to say I'm just an aide, but I know and we all know it takes so many different jobs to make a well-oiled machine work. From the amazing men and women we have cleaning and maintaining our campuses, to the people budgeting and allocating funds and resources. Tonight, I have the privilege of showing my daughter, if you choose to do what you love, even if at times it feels like a small position in a big machine, it can still be recognized and valued. For the entirety of my career with the district, I've been fortunate enough to work in preschool, eighteen, almost nineteen years. It's my home, and I can't imagine being anywhere else. I don't have the communication skills. I have seen this program grow and change in so many ways, and I've made sacrifices to stay in this program through its changes over the years. I am a preschool para. This is where I do my best work. This is where I thrive. This is where I make the most impact on the lives of the children, and I hope to be able to continue to do what I love. Lastly, thank you to Vincenzo and Elisabetta for accepting me as I am and making me a better person. Thank you guys so much.
McKenna Withers, followed up by Beth Frost.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, cabinet, colleagues, and community members. My name is McKenna Withers, and I am proud to be the special education teacher helping lead our district's inclusion program at Rosedale Elementary. To achieve excellence for all students, we focus on ensuring every student understands and is committed to living our core values of respect, integrity, lifelong learning, teamwork, and enthusiasm. Creating a school and district environment that emphasizes the whole child is critical to meeting our promise of excellence. With that in mind, last year I transferred to Rosedale, the number-one school, to launch a new program that reflects these values in action. Now, in its second year, the inclusion program has grown and evolved in exciting ways. We began this school year with twenty-four inclusion students in TK through fourth grade. Today, we have fifteen inclusion students, meaning nine students have exited or graduated from needing that level of direct support. Of those nine students, seven no longer require any direct specialized academic instruction services. Two receive minimal support, one hundred twenty minutes per week or less, which is lower than many students on the resource specialist program caseload. To put this into perspective, the total number of specialized academic instruction minutes we've reduced across these students is six thousand seven hundred and ninety minutes per week. That's six thousand seven hundred and ninety weekly minutes of support no longer needed because these students have gained the skills and confidence to thrive in general education settings. These aren't just numbers. They represent real progress. They represent children who are learning alongside their classmates, building friendships, developing independence, and believing in themselves in ways that might not have been possible in a more isolated setting. Earlier this year, I had the opportunity to attend a professional conference focused on inclusive education. One powerful takeaway really stuck with me. It takes school districts an average of four to seven years to fully shift their mindset and practices to be truly inclusive. But I believe we don't have to wait that long. We are already seeing what's possible when inclusion is prioritized, and we have a chance to be a model for how quickly and successfully this transition can happen when we commit to it together. We truly could not do this without the support and commitment at every level. From Dr. Hawkins to the Student Support Services team, to the support of the best principal we could ask for, Ms. Bellina, and of course, to our paraeducators and general education teachers who are the ones on the frontlines daily, making inclusion meaningful and successful for our students. This is what inclusion looks like when it's rooted in our shared values, respect, integrity, lifelong learning, teamwork, and enthusiasm, and when we focus on the whole child. Focusing on the whole child begins with us, the adults. It starts with our mindset, our attitude, and our willingness to take accountability for creating a positive, supportive environment where every student can thrive. I'm deeply proud of our students and honored to be part of this work. Thank you.
Beth Frost, followed up by Karen Frost.
Hi, my name is Beth Frost. Last year, I taught a special day class at Rosedale Elementary School, working with an amazing group of second, third, and fourth grade students. These students spent most of their day in my classroom, learning apart from their general education peers. For many of them, that had been their educational experience since preschool, growing up in self-contained special education settings. But this year, something incredible happened. The second graders were given the opportunity to participate in a brand-new inclusive program. For those unfamiliar with inclusion, it means that students with disabilities learn alongside their typically developing peers with the right supports in place to help them succeed. To be honest, I wasn't sure what to expect. My students had never spent a full day in a general education classroom. I had so many questions. Would they adjust? Would they be accepted? Would they be able to keep up? What I wasn't prepared for was the incredible growth I would witness. These students didn't just adapt, they thrived. I saw progress not just academically, but socially and emotionally. They formed friendships, they were embraced by their classmates, and with that sense of belonging came newfound confidence, the courage to take risks, to speak up, and to grow. The data tells a story. Last year, on the second IREDDI diagnostic, my second-grade students in the special day class averaged a score of three hundred and ten, three-ten in math and three-ninety-six in reading. This year, those same students scored four hundred and thirty-seven in math and five hundred and nine in reading. These numbers. This is off, but one of my SDC inclusion students just got her test scores back above standard. So of course, the journey hasn't been with, hasn't been without challenges. Inclusion requires flexibility, collaboration, and a deep commitment to meeting every student's unique needs. But through it all, I've seen stronger communication, greater confidence, and transformations that have been truly inspiring. I know there's been a discussion around how students are selected for our inclusion program. These decisions are grounded in the principle of least restrictive environment. Our goal is always to place each student in the setting where they can be most successful academically, socially, and emotionally, while still having access to the general education curriculum and their peers. Inclusion is just one of several placement options we have in Sogus. Some students flourish in that setting with the right supports. Others may need a more specialized or structured environment to meet their goals. Our IEP teams take this responsibility seriously, carefully reviewing each student's strengths, needs, and supports in accordance with federal and state guidelines. Before I close, I want to express my deep gratitude to Prit Chabra and Margaret Mike, the teachers that I work with. Seeing them teach has been truly inspiring. To Elizabeth Bellina and Darcy Quinn, thank you for your leadership, your support, and your belief in what's possible.
Good evening, board. And I want to first say that I'm just honored and humbled to be surrounded by so many special ed educators. Thank you for what you do as a special needs mom. I just, I so appreciate you so very, very much. I am going to be leaving right after this because I have a teenager that's watching my special needs son right now. So as soon as I'm done with the comments, I'm going to be heading out. It's nothing you said. I go. But I did want to bring up on the agenda that I saw that there was coming up the superintendent's review. And in that, I reviewed some of the documentation that was prepared for the review. And I did see that the first three years of our superintendent's review, there's a certain form that is used that collects data, and there's a lot of information about interactions with the community and community input. And then it says after those three years, for years four and beyond, there's a different form that's used that is more goal-based oriented. And my suggestion is, as we're approaching the superintendent review, because so much has happened this year with Sogus Element, or Santa Clarita Elementary closing, the Seven-Eleven Committee, big behaviors on campus, changes in our inclusion program, there's comments from the teachers, there's comments from the community that should be entered into the record, and currently, there's no mechanism for collecting that. that should be entered into the record and currently there's no mechanism for collecting that data and having it part of the evaluation process, good, bad and different. It should all be reviewed in the evaluation process and there's currently not a mechanism to do that. So my recommendation to this board is as you're proceeding forward for this review time, look at seeing if there's a way to add a mechanism to collect this data because there is a lot of public sentiment on a lot of different topics that have happened over the last year. And I think it's appropriate to have that data added into, like the teacher surveys and letters from the community added into the review for this evaluation process. So thank you very much for your consideration and I'm heading home to send my teenager to bed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the SAGAS Teachers Association, Ms. Linda Valdez.
Katy, I don't know how many teachers we have. Well, I have our preschool teachers. Okay, alrighty, good evening, board members, cabinet colleagues, community members and families. This one's going to be very, very short. Congratulations to this evening's recipients, our amazing classified staff. With only seventeen days left in the school year, in the midst of CAS testing and end-of-the-year summative assessments, report cards, and for most all of us, open house this week in two days. If ever there were a week to not be here at a board meeting, it would be this one. Open house is like, it's kind of, you know, the end-all, be-all, if you will. But, but, we felt it important to be here to honor our CSEA partners as you were recognized and celebrated tonight because you are that important to us. You are our partners, you are collaborators, you are our allies and our co-conspirators in all things good for our kids. We appreciate you more than our words can express. You are the wheels that keep our train moving. We thank you, we love you, we celebrate you. It has been our honor to work alongside you all this year. Together, we are better, so thank you.
And CSEA, Ms. Delmi Calderon.
Good evening, cabinet, board members and community. Congratulations to those who received the award tonight. In honor of Classified Week, we want to take a moment to express our gratitude for all they do. I have prepared a PowerPoint to share with you some of the wonderful faces your children get to see each and every day. My apologies to those, I was not able to get your pictures due to limited time. But we all know that each classified plays a vital role for the SAGAS school district. If you will please, I'm going to pass on my speech and then if we can just play the PowerPoint, please. Thank you. So the faces, they pretty much say it all. We have workers that come to our schools and yeah, they may be struggling with their own personal agendas, but yet they show up and they love and they transfer that empathy to the kids. So I want everyone, if you can stand with me and give everyone a shout out, um, wait, to give everyone a round of applause. From the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you and thank you. Remember, we are strong, we are essential, we are worthy. Together, we make meaningful contributions daily. To my colleagues, the, uh, speak Spanish. De todo corazón, gracias, gracias y gracias. Recuerden que somos fuertes, somos esenciales, somos valiosos. Juntos hacemos contribuciones significativas diariamente. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Delmi. And next up is SAGAS Administrator Association, Ms. Mia Stanley. Assistant Principal for Bridgeport.
Good evening, board and cabinet members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am Mia Stanley, the Assistant Principal at Bridgeport Elementary. With me tonight, I have Heather G. She is Bridgeport's PTA President-elect and she'll be speaking on part of our parent leadership after me. On behalf of the SAGAS Administrators Association, congratulations to our amazing classified staff being recognized tonight. It can't be said enough that our classified staff and all that they do is the foundation for our work that we do. Without their support, many of our essential educational services couldn't happen. We are so grateful for our honorees tonight and happy to celebrate them. As we near the close of the school year, each of our sites have been diligently digging into the end-of-the-year assessments. These summative assessments are more than just tests. There are critical tools that help us to understand each student's growth, inform instruction and shape the support that we'll offer in the fall. And I know for myself, I'm really excited to see the growth that we've made with all of the things that we're doing at our site. I want to commend our educators for their focus and care during this busy season. From administering assessments to providing the best testing environments, they've ensured that every student is seen and supported and doing their best. Our teachers look forward to seeing their growth and learning of their students who have, that they have invested all of their time and so much effort into all school year long. The district staff has played a very key role in this process. Thank you to the district office, Katie, for supporting the ongoing assessments practices, data analysis tools and the on-the-ground coaching support that helps with our data analysis in meaningful ways. Our ed services teams have worked side-by-side with principals and teachers to ensure clarity, consistency and responsive throughout. Looking ahead, we'll use this year's data to guide learning opportunities, refine instructional strategies and provide tailored interventions in the fall. Our shared goal remains the same, to give every student the opportunity to thrive. Your administrative teams also are tying up the school year by reflecting on the data that we have collected so far throughout the year. We are finalizing our SIPs, communicating with our stakeholders and putting into place our goals and actions for a successful 2025, 2026 school year. Our site council, ELAC and DLAC meetings are instrumental in collecting the the input that we desire to ensure that all student needs are met. Here in the SUSD, we work together. We celebrate our successes collectively and we plan for more successes as a team. And this year, we will finish strong.
Hello, everyone, I am Heather, oh my god, very nervous, right? Okay. I am Heather G, the PTA-elect, like she said. Thank you so much for the invitation to come speak tonight and share some of the fun and exciting things we have going on at the school. We just wrapped up Staff Appreciation Week. A heartfelt Western theme week full of breakfast, lunch and snacks. It was a little something that parents and the PTA members could do to give back to all the staff in the school and show them how much they mean to us and what they do for our kids. Coming up, we have Yearbook Delivery Day, which we're super excited about. We have a yearbook cover contest, art contest that we held earlier in the year. And it's Big Reveal Day of which art was chosen and it's always an exciting time. And then the end of year, the focus always turns to our promoting sixth graders, which is a really exciting time. They just had a really awesome field day that the teachers and parent team put together with team t-shirts and team flags and a DJ and an ice cream truck and a lot of fun. Hopefully, lots of memories were made. They have a yearbook signing breakfast coming up and where am I? And an evening promotion that hopefully will bring us cool weather. And also a really fun escape room plan for the last day of school, to hopefully bring them back on that last Friday. And lastly, I really want to thank the district and the board for sending the PTA, a PTA rep to our conference that just happened. It was, it's a really important weekend and I know I learned a lot during the workshops that I attended and the awesome, listening to the awesome speakers. And I feel engaged and ready to plan the new school year. So thank you so much.
So the students who don't escape the escape room, do they not get to go on summer break? The students who don't escape, they don't get to go on summer break, is that the deal? Okay.
The deal is, is that board members with educational degrees and credentials have to watch them for the summer.
Sure, party at my place.
Ms. Mary Mann, Child Development Programs.
Thank you and congratulations on the classified employees, so well deserved. Well, in early childhood education, we're pleased to report that the State Preschool Self-Evaluation Survey, June, June 2nd is complete. All twenty-three or twenty-four early education division components were evaluated and responded to. Those requirements are set forth by the California Department of Education. We need to review them, we review our procedures and our ongoing monitoring efforts. The key areas reviewed include licensing, compliance, professional development, class, which is the classroom assessment scoring system, fiscal accountability, the DRDP, parent surveys and so many other critical program elements. We're proud to share that our state preschool program meets or exceeds all standards outlined in the survey. The completed evaluation has been submitted to the California Department of Education and this demonstrates our continued commitment to high-quality early childhood education and our dedication to serving families within our community. We thank you for our support, your support and our support in getting this big document done.
Alright, moving on to our superintendent cabinet reports, we'll start with Ms. Michelle Berry.
Thank you. Again, I want to say congratulations to all the classified employees tonight. I could tell with the people when they came up to the podium that they were very humble people and, you know, just feeling that they were doing what they needed to do or doing what they love. But I just want to let you know that what you do is so important. Take the time, celebrate you, it is a big deal. I've been in education a while and, you know, as a classroom teacher or even in the role that I do now, we could absolutely not do anything without the teams that support us. And I will just say, my office has been overly busy this year with transfers, transfer requests, transfer denials, enrollment, all of those things. And I intersect with our wonderful office managers on a daily basis. And if it wasn't for them and making sure all the enrollment was accurate, putting them into infant and campus, communicating with the families, updating the spreadsheets, we wouldn't have the accurate information that we needed to make sure kids get to where they need to be and families get what they need. So that's just a small example, but the amazing people that do all the work out there really take the time to celebrate you and I thank you. Whether you were somebody who was nominated tonight or somebody who just prefers to be in the back room, back, back room, background, sorry. It's the small things that add up to the big things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I also want to congratulate all of our classified folks on their accomplishments today and all their support. And I also want to just describe a little bit the finality of the Library and Media Specialist Committee. We met yesterday to meet as a group to go over the findings of all the input that was gathered. Individualized input was gathered from Library and Media Specialists, CSEA leadership, the office managers, the teachers and the principals. Overwhelmingly, two things came across. One, keep the schedule as it is and keep the Wednesdays. But two, we missed the weekly trips to the library, right? There was a theme that was definitely throughout for both. Which I think, especially talking with CSEA leadership, they appreciated the fact that we're going to maintain that Wednesday. But really, when we're looking at this, if we, if we maintain the schedule as we have it right now, the difference that will free up and I think allow people the flexibility to do what their site can do and wants to do is to take their assigned days where they can have the library and they can actually make a schedule that fits their school site and what they have capacity for. So we'll be looking at the same classroom configurations when the enrollment is settled, like we normally would. Making sure, I'm just going to use the example, that the library number of days stays the same. So you're either a two, a three or a four-day schedule where you're seeing students and then everybody will have that Wednesday as the sacred day where we can still do the holiday makeups and move the schedule when we have a Monday or a Friday off. And then they can use that time to shelve. I think there was a comment from CSEA leadership that this year they've had almost zero need or complaints or information, you know, sessions because they haven't had a lot of issues. A lot of that comes from those Wednesdays, so I'm glad to see that that was something that was successful. As those days then are turned over to the site, they can take a look at those days and talk to their Library and Media Specialists. And I'm going to advise the principals to include their leadership teams as they're looking at that schedule and creating that schedule. So they'll be working on that, I'm sure, over the summer as we prepare for next year. Thank you.
Alright, I just want to say congratulations to all of our classified employee nominees and award winners. It is one of our best board meetings when we get to do these awards and it's very well deserved, so thank you.
Mr. Heinlein.
Good evening. Tonight, I just wanted to mention that this week we opened two bids for two more projects going on this summer. We have two left and then our bidding season will be over for the summer. And then since the last time we spoke, I know I talked about the COLA going down to 2.3%, but now we know that even the future years are also projected to be less. On a positive note, I got to adventure to Sacramento on Friday to co-present to the Coaching and Induction Program for brand-new chief business officials. And we presented about special education staffing. So we have really three tools in our state. We have a tool that was We have a tool that was developed by the San Diego Selpa. We have the FICMAT Special Education Efficiency Tool. And then the tool that we've developed here kind of ties them all together. And so now, we're able to share that with all the new business folks throughout the state so that hopefully they're successful. That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Hawkins?
You're so amazing. We, Mrs. Belina and I missed you. We were there on Saturday and Sunday to do a presentation. My report is, is all around our classified folks. I already said thank you to everybody, congratulations to everybody. But there's a group of people this year that took a lot of risk, I guess, and, and they showed a lot of courage because they let the superintendent shadow them. And shadowing is something that we used to do one time for maybe about an hour during Classified Employees Month. And all of us would get together and CSA would set it up. But this was a little different. I had the opportunity to shadow two of our custodians. Mr. Sal at Sky Blue, who is absolutely amazing, and he taught me how to use the Zamboni and how to set up the new trash system and, and how to do all of that work. And then Mr. Sergio at Foster, who taught me how to clean all kinds of stuff, including the toilets and use the Zamboni again. And I think the most amazing thing that I learned is how many steps a custodian takes in a morning. He had taken over 8,000 steps in the first three hours that he was at work. So, that was an exciting thing to do and work with them. I got to work with Lizzie and Rosalyn at Plum Canyon and be an office manager. And again, not just for an hour, but for the morning. So, you got to see the whole shebang from soup to nuts. I also was invited by the team at Plum Canyon. Thank you, Vanessa, to be a campus supervisor for the morning. And none of you have lived till you've had that job. Those of you that are old enough in your teaching or experienced enough in your teaching to remember doing recess duty, you don't remember what recess duty is like. Recess duty for four hours plus planning for, for PE. But that was one of the best parts, to see how the student experience is for the planning time that we managed to work out and how dedicated the people are, especially at Plum Canyon, Mr. Morda, who Lord help you if you don't play the game by all of the rules because he is coming around helping us make sure that we're all playing the game and your feet are supposed to touch and you're supposed to be bent over a certain way, but it was super, super fun. I got to be a, an a paraprofessional instructional assistant with Leslie Brooker and the team at Bridgeport in a rap program for the morning. And that was extremely interesting and it gave me a lot of insight into things that we need to do. And they were very kind and helpful, and it was just a really, it was a really positive experience. I got the opportunity over the last two months to work with Jenny Sawyer at, you know, our, one of our Employees of the Year as a library assistant, library media assistant. Got to see the schedule that we've heard so much about in action, got to learn how to check out books. Mostly what I got to see is how they're the pied, she's the Pied Piper of books in her library. And it's so inviting in her library that, you know, I was sitting and reading myself because the kids were there for a little bit longer and we were doing silent reading. And I was like, I just got to see what that one book is. It's called Drawn Together, but let me see, I want to make sure I, I hit everybody that I got a chance to see. I think the experience is something that I think all of us should get the opportunity to do, especially all of us that are certificated, is to work in a classified position. May all have done those classified positions as we went to college or we got prepared to do our certificated position. But there are so many teeny tiny little things that we don't remember that they do for us every single day. And they don't get a medal for it, they don't get anything for it, and it's hard and it's sweaty and it's tedious. And it's not pleasant sometimes when someone, you know, you have to call for attendance, not always pleasant. And they made me do that, so it, it was very, very fun. And it's, it's a practice both with the teachers and with the classified that I think I'm going to continue because I think it gives all of us that insight so that when Nick and I are looking at how to help like shade, we need to have that talk, by the way, shade for our noon supervisors. And what does that look like? We taught, we've talked about umbrellas, we've talked about things. It's impossible. I know it sounded like a good idea, but you can't hold an umbrella and be out on the playground with your water bottle and your this and your that. It just doesn't work. So, what can we do? Because some of our schools, we don't have enough shade. So, I just want to thank all those people because it was no small task. It wasn't just walking me around for half an hour and then I was going to go. I was with them for two and a half to four hours. And I, when they wouldn't, didn't want me to clean the toilets, I was like, no, you have to clean the toilets, I have to clean the toilets. Give me those gloves. I hated wearing the gloves all day. I guess I had to because some of the stuff you didn't want to touch, but, you know, if they have to do it, so do we. So, it was an exciting activity, set of activities, and I'm going to keep it up. But I do just want to thank them. They were amazing, amazing to let me do that. So, thank you. Happy Classified Employees Week.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you. Once again, congratulations to our Classified Employees of the Year. You all do so many amazing things every single day that help support the learning and achievement of our district. Thank you. On May 7th, I was very happy to attend the final meeting of our 711 Asset Management Committee as they wrapped up their work. I believe they are now ready to present their recommendations on the Santa Clarita Elementary School site. And I wanted to express our sincere gratitude for all of their hard work and dedication to our community. Just this past weekend, Dr. Hawkins alluded to it. Some of my colleagues at the LA County School Trustees Association reached out to a large group of us asking for testimonials on school districts that have done exceedingly well in, in addressing chronic absenteeism. And after submitting an application, Dr. Hawkins and Mrs. Belina traveled up to Sacramento, and I was very grateful that you did, and, and talked with the CSBA Delegate Assembly about what we've done around chronic absenteeism. And all morning, Sunday morning long, my phone was just absolutely blowing up saying what an amazing job you did and how impressed they were with our district's programming. And so, if you could share with me your slide deck presentation, lots of people have requested it. If you've, please.
For communicating, sorry.
No, that's quite all right. So, if you could get that to me, I know there's a lot of districts around Southern California that are waiting on it. They'd like to see it. Just last night, in this room, we had a gathering of the Santa Clarita Valley School Trustees Association. And I was glad to mingle with my colleagues from around the valley and hear what's going on in their districts. Those are always enjoyable meetings. This afternoon, some of us gathered at Emblem Elementary School for the dedication of Gracie's Corner in the library there. And it was a, a very special, a very touching ceremony. And I just wanted to thank Ms. Demshur, Ms. Ford, Ms. Ivy, the committee that was formed around Gracie's Corner, the Emblem PTA, and of course, the Muehlberger family for making this happen. It was very special, beautiful little corner in the library dedicated to that special young lady. And then finally, I wanted to thank the two teachers from Rosedale for updating us on the inclusion program at Rosedale this evening. Thank you very much for the update. I've made no secret about my support for inclusion programs. And clearly, at Rosedale, it's being done right and being done well. Many of you know that I was a general education teacher who worked in multiple inclusion models. And my 19 years of inclusive education has consistently shown me that it helps all of our students achieve their fullest potential of communication, collaboration, leadership, kindness, and understanding, all abilities needed to succeed and lead. Not just our special education students, but our general education students achieve greater heights when they're able to work together. So, again, thank you very much. Great job.
Mr. Drunky?
Good evening, everyone. First, of course, I want to say thank you to each and every one of our classified employees across the district. Of course, we have the best classified employees, and I know this because every year, we get such an amazing group of Classified Employees of the Year from professions all across the district, paraeducators, campus supervisors, office managers, custodians, library media specialists. Thank you all for everything that you do every day. But especially thank you for the difference that you make in our students' lives. And also a big thank you to our classified families, whether it's your mom or dad, your husband or wife, or your son or daughter. Thank you for sharing your family member with us and allowing them to shine in their jobs. I was remiss at the last meeting. I forgot to mention that on May 1st, I attended the Open House at Bokeh Canyon School, and I wanted to thank Darcy Quinn for showing me around the campus. And I am so happy that, that playground equipment is almost done and the campus looks amazing. As Mr. Watson mentioned, I also attended the Asset Management Committee on the 7th, the SCV Trustees Meeting last night, and the dedication today of Gracie's Corner at Emblem. I want to thank the Muehlberger family for letting us honor Gracie's memory. And I, the one thing I was a little bit curious about, Dr. Hawkins, in the job shadowing. Years ago, you said, you know, you would spend an hour or so on your, your job shadow.
Yes.
When I was working with custodians or in the warehouse, somehow my job shadows lasted three, four hours?
I don't know. You'd have to ask Sulema because I did it with her. And now, look, she's, yeah, I know.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Ms. Cooper?
Congratulations again to the classified employees. I know I've said it 100 times, but my mom was a bus driver and an office manager, and so it's very special to me. And I can't believe Mrs. Hugo is retiring. She was at Highlands when my daughter was at Highlands many years ago. But I, they are the icing on the educational cake. They add the little extra and, and so much love for the kids. I also attended the SCV Trustee Meeting along with several of my colleagues. And we got to hear from the administrator of the Selpa, which was very enlightening. I really appreciated that. I also attended the library dedication, Gracie's Corner. And the, the strength of her parents and her father to share the stories that he did was just amazing. Last week, I spent part of the morning at Bridgeport. Thank you to Mrs. Vela Karadny for setting it up and Mrs. Stanley for accompanying me. After hearing and reading about Orton Gillingham for so many years, I got to see it in action. Mrs. DeSmet is very skilled. And if you don't know, all of the first graders at Bridgeport can read, which is impressive. So, watching Orton Gillingham, they have, they have little trays with sand that they, you know, write the letters in, and then they have audio visual text out, like, the learning is just so, you know, everything. And watching Mrs. DeSmet in action was amazing. She could teach the entire class, but she still could see, you know, if a kid needed a little bit of extra push or a little help or a little encouragement, she would give that to them and just, you know, no, no hitch in the teaching. It was amazing. I also went to Mrs. Bernard's second grade class. Again, an amazing teacher. So, she wanted them to do an activity which was going to require silence. And she could see that they weren't going to be silent, so she set the timer for two minutes and said, make all the noise you want for two minutes. And then, and then the silent activity went really, really well. And so, just, you know, her being in tune with their needs was neat to watch. And then finally, I went to Mrs. Sandifer's TK class. They were coming back from an onsite assembly where they saw, you know, lots of sea creatures. I did learn that starfish bring their stomachs out of their mouth to eat, so that was impressive. And then they did a little exercise, you know, like drawing pictures and writing about their activity. And she kind of apologized to me for not showing a typical TK day, and I just, it was more important that she do what the kids needed. And, and she was like, you know, they, they just needed to, to dump what was in their brain out on the paper. And I'm like, that's what's important is, you know, you, and, and I want to recognize her paraprofessional Mrs. Erd. You know, the, they, you didn't even, like, she was so quiet. Like, if you watched her, you saw how much she did, but you didn't even notice that, that she was there. It was so smooth. Anyways, just watching the teachers and, and seeing them be in tune with the kids, and it was just amazing. And so, I really appreciated being able, you know, them welcoming me into their classrooms and being able to watch. And next week, I will be at Sky Blue Mesa, and I'm really excited about that, too. And looking forward to Open House this week and next week. I'm going to Helmers and then Highlands. I think Highlands is the only one that's not on the 22nd. And Ms. Withers, you, you talked about the whole child, and it's come up in a couple of reports. I would like to make a request that it's on, at some point on the agenda or a board study session that we define the whole child like, you know, a district definition that would include input from like teachers and community. So, if, you know, so that's my request. Thank you to the Library Committee for addressing concerns and completely unrelated to education. Today is my son's birthday, so the fact that I'm here, you shall be very honored. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Grace?
Yep. I want to say thank you to the Bokeh preschool teachers for coming up and speaking tonight and just offering your perspectives and thanking the district for the upgrades that you guys have received and communicating some struggles and concerns that you have. I think it's really important to speak up so that you can finally get a solution and, and a resolution. If you, if you don't speak up, nothing changes. So, appreciate you guys spending the time and coming up and speaking. So, looking forward to hopefully continued improvement there. So, thank you again. Thank you for the library update, something that I know that I've spoke about many times. I'm appreciative that there was a solution. I'm happy that there will be a change for next year. And again, I would continue to, you know, advocate for people to continue to speak up. Otherwise, things won't change. And I know change makes everyone happy, hopefully. And just change is just trying to improve our district and our community and just making sure that our teachers and our classified employees have a voice. I also want to thank just the classified employees. I've spent a little bit of time with them as well, getting to learn the different groups and just hearing and seeing and acknowledging kind of their challenges, their concerns, what they love, what they don't love. So, I'm really appreciative to them. We are privileged to have them within our community, and I don't think they get enough credit in and of itself. So, thank you to everyone within that organization. So, that's it.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of updates. I wanted to thank the teachers, the RSP teachers that I met with a couple of weeks ago. It's always like Mrs. Grace said, it's always good to hear perspective from different folks and just to understand, you know, some of the, the challenges, but also some of the, the good things that are happening in the schools. And, you know, I think the, the most important thing is to come up with solutions. And sometimes those solutions aren't necessarily things that we would know. It's the, you know, the experts that are out in the field that come up with them. But it's, it's great to hear the perspective and, and, you know, I'm glad we have that collaborative kind of spirit working together and hearing each other out. So, that's great, and I appreciate your time on that. I also wanted to recognize our CSA employees. I think what's unique to me is that everybody does something different, right? But it's really a community that we create at the schools. I'd love to hear that, you know, from the janitor to the, or, or the maintenance worker, sorry, the maintenance worker to the, you know, the person in the classroom, everybody's there to welcome the kids and to make them feel important and heard and special. That's super important. I also love to hear about the, the different leadership styles because sometimes I think people think you need to be in, you know, over the top, loud to, to be a leader, and you really don't. You can be quiet and you can be, you know, the person that sits in the background and just helps out and is there to, to, to support and to do the things that are needed. So, just really proud of the people that we work with and so grateful for all the efforts that they show every single day for our kids, for our families. Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to, to mention is, I know Ms. Valdez mentioned Open House and how important it is to the teachers and how much they put into the, to Open House. As a parent, thank you because I look forward to Open House every single year. I love seeing all the work that my kids do. I really appreciate, you know, going into the classroom, if you, you can feel the spirit and the energy. And I know my kids love to show me the things that they've been doing. So, your efforts don't go unnoticed to all the teachers that are still here. Really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to, to Bridgeport's Open House on Thursday. So, thank you, guys. All right. Let's move on to our consent calendar. Are there any items to be removed from the consent calendar? No? Okay. Do we have a motion and a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Okay, second? Somebody, okay, whoever did it, great. I think it was Ms. Cooper and Mr. Watson. Yeah, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no, motion passes. Moving on to Education Services. Oh, Education Services, sorry. Okay, can I get a motion to approve UCSF multitudes, Sogas Contract 2425357? Motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
You have any questions? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Close, no, motion passes. Moving on to Adopt Resolution 202425, number 63, a resolution of the Governing Board of the Sogas Union School District for the Observance of National Flag Day. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Thank you. And do we have any comments?
Well, just recognizing that this year is the 245th anniversary of the flag's adoption. That was just fun to mention, but we'll recognize Flag Day, June 14th.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? No? Okay. Does he call the roll? Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Garbey?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Next up, Adopt Resolution 202425, number 64, a resolution of the Governing Board of the Sogas Union School District for the Recognition and Observance of Juneteenth. Do a motion in a second, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Just recognizing the holiday of Juneteenth coming up in June next month.
Great. And of course, you call the roll. Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Garbey?
Aye.
I vote aye. Great, motion passes. Okay, moving on to Student Support Services, approval of the Sogas Union School District Wellness Policy 25. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to Human Resources, approve the updated 2425 salary schedule for classified and certificated employees. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right. So at the last board meeting, the board approved a 2% salary increase for our CSCA and STA employees, and this is the resulting salary schedules.
Great. Do you have any questions or comments? No? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, approve the updated 2425 salary schedules for management confidential and unrepresented employees. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, so again, at the last board meeting, the board approved 2% salary increase for management confidential and unrepresented employees, and these are the resulting salary schedules.
Great. Do you have any questions or comments? No, we have a motion in a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Close, no, motion passes. Next up, approve the memorandum of understanding for fiscal year 2526 between the Santa Clarita Valley California Teacher Induction Program and the Sogas Union School District. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So we belong to a consortium for induction for our new teachers. And this is just the standard MOU that we sign each year.
Great. Motion in a second. Do we have any questions? No? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Approve request for tuition reimbursement after successfully completing professional development courses. We have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, this is one of our special ed paraeducators who's taking courses that have that relate to special education and improving like behavioral supports and assessment and stuff like that to improve her own ability to be a special ed paraeducator.
Thank you. Question or comment?
Just love seeing the growth.
Great.
Yes, would love to see lots more of it.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion in a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to Business Services, approve Nolan Construction Services Inspection of Record Services for Plum Canyon Rooftop Solar Project. Move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Very excited to finally finish up this project this summer. This is for the inspector of record to be on the project while the while the contractor finishes it up.
Great. Any questions or comments? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion passes. Approve to declare certain district-owned property a surplus. Move to approve. Let's do it a second.
Second.
Just some electronics, but.
Did we skip over Student Support Services in the long?
No, we approved it.
Oh, yes, fast, sorry.
We approved it. Didn't anybody have any questions about the surplus? No? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes. All right, moving on to General Functions. This is the approval of the Jennifer Howser Memorial at Rosedale Elementary School. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I've asked Ms. Belina to, I'm trying to find her, to come up just to, just in case. We've had the opportunity to have a student speak on this issue. I know we take these memorials very seriously, so I asked her to come up in case the board had any questions. But this is, this is requested by the school community.
I have a question. What is the, what will the memorial entail?
So the, we've worked with our PTA. We've coupled, we had a parent, we had a committee, and we worked with our PTA. And they approved a bronze plaque that if you've been to Rosedale, just beyond where the library is, there's a tile wall of, I don't know if it's founding families, but I think at one point in time, they bought tiles and put them on the wall. And we'll add the plaque just beyond where the tiles are, just, I believe her face is on it and a sweet quote, you know, in loving memory of Jennifer Howser and the life she's touched.
That's fantastic.
I just want to say that the fact that this came before us on behalf of a student speaks volumes to the level of relationships that she developed. And and I know many of your staff do, which is just so crucial in in high-quality education. I I think it's wonderful.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, it's great to see the memorials coming to the board for approval just for the simple matter that we can now keep track of all of them. I I know I had mentioned the playground equipment that's going in at Bokeh. That particular area that the equipment's going in used to be a memorial, well, not a memorial garden, but a a garden that honored a longtime employee there. And I hope that at some point in the future, we can maybe bring something and and sort of restore that honor there.
Well, that's why the district has a board policy, and we should follow it.
Is that what that was?
So that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
I I was told, because I wanted to have it, and I was told it's it's a, there's a board policy that you have to have board approval. So here we are. We put it on the agenda. I've worked with Pam. We were hoping to get it on the last board meeting, but it didn't happen. So here we are.
Well, thank you, Ms. Belina, for your work on this. And and also just a quick shout out to the PTA. They literally, all of our PTAs are always stepping up and doing just great things and supporting our schools. So please let them know that we're we're so grateful for their support on this, too.
I will let them know. Thank you.
Great. All right, we had a motion in a second. Any questions, comments? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, moving on to Resolution 2425, number 65, a resolution of the Governing Board of the Sogas Union School District declaring an excused absence from a regular board meeting for for Anna Greece.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? You call the roll. Okay, I call the roll. Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Greece?
I'm staying.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Okay, great. Okay, moving on to discussion of the special meeting for June 11th. Dr. Hawkins?
So June 11th is on the calendar right now as a special meeting. It's for a behavior discussion. And I've been talking with some of the members of Behavior Council. They're feeling a little bit overwhelmed by the end of the year and the behavior pieces. So there's not a lot other than that they've been going to training to update the board on that we haven't updated the board here. So because this is a special board meeting that was planned in advance, we didn't want to, Mrs. Garbey and I discussed it, we didn't want to just cancel the meeting without having a public discussion about it. But we don't feel that there's enough to present. I will say that the, that members of, some members, not all, of the Behavior Council and I, we've had discussions about the Keenan Report recommendation about the whole child. And I will say it, oh, she's gone. When McKenna mentioned about the whole child, and I hear about the whole child. And I think, and I was even thinking this morning about how, when I came here, the district has spent a lot of time establishing its mission and its vision and its five, you know, key areas. But we've been working on for the last at least five years, a lot about the whole child, and we don't have a definition. And I think one of the things that I've heard, whether it's been at the coffees I've had at each of the school sites where we've talked about student behaviors for more than the hour we were scheduled, is, you know, having all of that community input. And so I think if we were to not have this meeting, my recommendation would then be to take the already scheduled September meeting that would normally be for data and hire an outside person to facilitate the board, the school employees and leadership, as well as community members in developing that definition of the whole child. Because I think it's that definition of the whole child that allows all of us. I'm not a big mission and vision kind of person, but I think that's part of the piece that's missing. What, what is our vision, our mission of the whole child? And what does that look like? How is that included with behavior and academics and all of those pieces? And I think that allows our community, who I know we've heard from, wants to to have more conversation, to have that conversation. And it also will allow the board and myself and the cabinet to participate in the process, not facilitate the process. And that was the recommendation in the Keenan Report was to do that. And so we didn't even really talk about that, but that that's kind of where I am. So I would like to see us postpone, if you will, and then transform our September meeting this year because we all know how hard it is to schedule a meeting anymore. And so I figured September is normally when we talk about data, and you've got to talk about some data a little bit when you want to talk about the whole child. So probably be more productive than what we would normally do. Is that what you want me to say? Boss?
Are you talking about combining those two?
I'm talking about just canceling the June 11th and just taking the the meeting in September and making it a, dedicating its time to the whole child rather than do a data presentation.
So we would not get the annual information?
The day of meeting or?
I would just, I would just say, for this year, forego it. Because we do give you the data in other ways, and I know how much you love that meeting, and I love that meeting. I think it's an amazing night. But there are only so many amazing nights to have and get everybody together. And I think, you know, this one keeps getting pushed off. And.
What if, because it's already scheduled, and I don't think a discussion of the whole child is gonna be complete in one night? Can we start the discussion on June 11th and finish it in September?
It would be lovely to do that, except I don't think you're gonna have the full attention of the teaching staff and the administrative staff. I think you, tonight, they they've hit the marker of we're done. And and so our teachers and our classified staff, they take off when school's out. And I know it's still, you know, it's still close, but they're done. They're tired.
Fair enough.
And actually, that was one of the reasons we talked about, too, that it is the last week of school. So in terms of getting people's attention or getting people to participate, it might be difficult. And I think for it being such an important thing to talk about, like, we want to get people's attention. So maybe.
This way we can advertise it.
Exactly, and coming back from.
When everybody's fresh.
When everybody's fresh, and it kind of ties into like expectations, right? So it's like you talk about, this is the start of the school year. These are the expectations. These are the things that we want to see in terms of behavior, in terms of goals.
So the, I'm I'm happy with that. I would only say, if there's any chance, if the opportunity presents itself that we can somehow still do, even if it's just a mini data meeting. I I know how important it is for accountability to to have that meeting. And I think it's important that.
Will you be accountable?
Right, and save that if we can.
Thank you.
I understand.
I'm just looking at the principals thinking, can you be accountable?
So the suggestion is that we cancel the date, move the topic to September.
There you go. Yes.
No.
Goodbye, me.
We're not moving this topic to September. We're changing.
Behavior-related.
Okay.
The next behavior committee meeting?
The next behavior committee meeting is on June 5th. And we have a conscious discipline training that we're going through so that they can see what are the next steps. Because they take a two-day training in August for Capturing Kids' Hearts. And I've already talked with several of them, including some of the people we hear from here at board meetings. They are feeling filled to the top of their brims with training. And so they want to make sure that they have time to implement it and understand it because we are providing them with a new social emotional learning program. They're all going to Capturing Kids' Hearts programs. So we've been talking about what will that look like next year, and we'll have more conversation about that in June.
So are we going to reschedule that meeting? Because I don't think we can do both of those things in one night. Like, like, when will we have a, like, an update from the Behavior Council?
I think you'll have it here at the board meeting. Like, like, we'll have, absolutely, absolutely.
When's the first day of school for next year?
August.
So I think, but, not I think, but my concern is, is I, I acknowledge the fact that it's after school is over and you don't have, you don't have enough people, right, to maybe get the response. You're not going to have the response from the community because school is out. Teachers are gone, teachers are gone, staff is gone. Like, I can appreciate that. I think my concern is coming back to the new school year without a plan put into place that has been asked for repeatedly from the community. So I, the whole child, great. But I think coming back to school, knowing the next board meeting is not until the 19th, I would hope that we would have a plan in place before the kids go back to school so that it gives parents some reprieve and some assurance that the board has actually done something behind the scenes. Because right now, I don't think the community feels like that. And to further prolong it, I don't think is doing us any service. So I just am publicly saying that, that we just keep delaying it and we're not addressing it. And again, we are delaying it months now. So I don't know what needs to happen during the summer so that behind the scenes, things are moving along. Because I would anticipate the Behavior Committee not meeting during the summer. So there is a standstill. So what is the plan to address what we've all been talking about before the next school year?
So one of the things, Dr. Hawkins, that you said is to give them a chance to implement it? So is, is the plan, like, regardless of whether we're updated or not, is the plan getting implemented?
So all of the schools are being trained as of this August in Capturing Kids' Hearts. And we've seen a lot of success at the schools who have been trained in Capturing Kids' Hearts, whether it's on the connect in a survey or with their behaviors or those things. Not to say that there's not big behaviors, but we've seen a lot of success with those schools. So we are training all of the other schools. When we have talked as a Behavior Council about what we would do going forward for what our standard approach to behaviors would be, it is clear that there needs to be aspects of Capturing Kids' Hearts, conscious discipline, there needs to be aspects of PBIS. We're not looking for the off-the-shelf piece. We're looking for the piece that that seems to be working best for us. It's very difficult to make the serious decision about that without the teachers all having had that experience because they haven't been to Capturing Kids' Hearts training. So they know the trainings that they've had and what they need to do. And then what they need to do is recommend, okay, these are the pieces that we would keep, that we would do, you know, hard stop, this is what all of us do. This is what all of us do. These are the wiggle room areas. These are, this is how we approach behavior. This is the kinds of training that we need, both for ourselves, for our classified, and for our management. I know we're taking the management team this summer to conscious discipline, both in how they work with adults and how they can work with some of the kids when they're in those sort of really high-level states. So I think we're, there's not a program we can buy, a curriculum we can buy, a system we can use that is comprehensive enough that the team can make a decision on. All of those people are struggling with behaviors. Everybody on that committee has a classroom. In some way, shape, or form, they're all struggling with those behaviors in different ways. So we're trying to come together to get good training and then make decisions and recommendations, and have the 60 people then make recommendations to the district for how we will train and work with everybody else. So we put some things into place after our discussion here at the Dais around behaviors for big behaviors. We've seen, I don't want to say improvement. I think what we've seen is when we have big behaviors, there have been some, maybe more severe consequences, I guess you could say. But the behaviors are severe. So when the kids did the TikTok challenge and destroyed their computers, some of them might have been suspended or in-house suspended. It depends on what happened and what it looked like for those kids. And we did do it based on the individual student. But there, those behaviors were taken seriously. And I think everybody knew that. I don't think some people in the community or parents were thrilled with some of those decisions. But those were things that we felt were serious, and we took them seriously that way. I mean, I can see Ms. Belina shaking her head. And I know if the other principals were sitting there, they would all be saying the same thing. So I think solving the problem of big behaviors in the classroom that we talked about is bigger than a set of rules. It's bigger than a set of expectations. It's bigger than a set of consequences. It is about individual mindset. It is about individual strategies. And those take time to teach everybody and to get them to look at. So another step, another piece of that, is we've met with kindergarten teachers and TK teachers. Dr. Fractor has met with them, and we've talked about, what does the school schedule look like? What is their expectation? I have set the expectation for all of our TK teachers that their job is not academic. Their job is to make good humans. As we've learned in conscious discipline, they need to have all of those executive functioning skills ready and capable in order to help them to be able to handle the academic pieces. We've talked as a kindergarten team about how their job is going to be academics, but not to put things back on themselves. So for example, when we take away iReady usage, don't put it back on yourself, even though that's what they wanted to do.
So those are the... I have three million more questions, but I don't think that the topic we're discussing is even on the agenda.
No, it's not.
It's not, yeah.
So, sorry.
No.
It's a lot, but I think in answer, in answer to the question, it's a huge issue.
Other than canceling them?
You're okay for canceling.
Exactly. Okay, so moving on to conduct first reading of board policy BP 2000 administration. I did want to have just a quick conversation on this one, because I think there was some misunderstanding of what some language that was included in that means or striking out language means. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that, specifically as it relates to the board being able to, to speak to legal counsel as it relates to the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, so this policy, like all policies, is updated through California School Boards Association. They, they look at policies with new laws and new government codes and changes in government codes, and they refine them. All of our policies, unless there's an area that says we have sort of an option, we tend to follow that, because there are many things that maybe none of us in this room are attorneys, that we would know to make certain changes. When we look at that section, there were a lot of redundancies, both in this, in that policy specifically, and there are redundancies in other policies. So CSBA, in their notes, had recommendations for what the policy should look like. And it included striking out that piece that our policy said that the board could meet with their attorney beforehand. It, it didn't say you can't meet with your attorney. It just took that piece out, because it does indicate multiple times, both in the policy and in the, and in the government code, that you can meet with your designated representative. And in the case of the superintendent, unlike the negotiations team for Dr. Stevenson, when she's working with, as our negotiator. In the case of a superintendent, the negotiations person is generally the attorney. For example, when I was hired as superintendent, it was the attorney for the district that communicated and negotiated back and forth with me before we spoke as a, as a board and employee. So that happens all the time. You, there's, it's both in Board Bylaw 9320, Board Bylaw 9321, and Board Bylaw 9323.2, all the different things that are actions that you can take. It's in the notes from the piece. And so it was just struck out, because it no longer matches the piece that's there. But by no means is it taking away any rights of the board to consult with their legal counsel.
And that's consistent. I mean, anytime, it's never, like, even though this was...
Well, that's not true.
That's experienced, that is not true.
You can consult with your legal counsel in certain areas, but this particular area is allowable in closed session for the board. And you, as the president representative, also can speak with the, with the legal counsel.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. I had the same question as well. And I appreciate you taking it. Last minute, when I reached out this morning, you referred us to Board Bylaw 9321. And I was still confused about it, but your clarification, I just found it. It does say, "The board may meet in closed session to review the board's position and/or instruct its designated representatives regarding salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of its represented and unrepresented employees, and for represented employees, any other matters."
I think it's important for all of us to understand when these pieces were made. So this was originally a change that was suggested for June of 2024. I'm bringing it to you now. We all know what's happened to my life last end of May. So June of 2024 was a challenging time. However, this was done as part of government code changes because of how school boards in, I would probably say, the winter of 2023 and the early time of 2024 were releasing their superintendents immediately following elections and things that were happening. And so they made some changes. And so that's where all of this is coming from. And so when you think about it...
The additions on page three.
Right. And so, so when you're, when you're talking about that and they're cleaning it up, it is the necessary nature of having those conversations, excuse me, at a regular board meeting, not at a special board meeting, and then using your representative or designee. It's not a negotiated piece. You guys always have for that piece. We talk to attorneys.
And these additions on page three, those just reflect...
Those just reflect the change in law.
Okay.
Again, we don't go into policy and just change it willy-nilly. We follow the gamut pieces. I don't give you all the notes and everything. Yeah, they come out five times a year. We go through the notes. We look at all of it. We make the changes. If there's a place where we need to make something that is unique to us. The benefit of having ours aligned with that is they have all been vetted by multiple attorneys. They cite the case law, and then us keeping our policies tight to those helps us as we're updating to make sure that we're not making any errors. And I'm very proud of this team up here, because we are maybe a couple of policies off-date, and we're gonna get a whole new set next month. So we'll be, you know, paddling again, but that doesn't usually happen in school districts, so.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that this board has the tools that are legally available to us, should we need them. And again, appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, I think in the spirit of transparency and just making sure that the board feels that they have what they need, we need, I would, I would prefer to add it back so that we understand that we have the ability to do that, rather than read between the lines and assume that we can do that, knowing that new board members are gonna come and go. I think it's important that they understand that they have the right to do that. So my recommendation would be to add it back.
But this is just the first reading, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But it's stated elsewhere.
Right, but it also, I just want, but within this board policy, I think it's important to add it, regardless if it's stated elsewhere. There's plenty of other board policies that state the same information, but we still include it.
Well, I think part of the, some of the revisions that CSBA is trying to make periodically is to remove a lot of that duplicative language.
But we also have the ability to make the board policies fit to our district and to our district's needs, not just follow CSBA.
The fact that it's redundant, I'm ambivalent. Like I said, it's indicated in the board bylaws. And so if it's indicated in policy as well, that's fine with me. I can get clearly delineates that we have that ability to do it, so, whatever.
And this is just the first reading, so it'll come back next. At the next meeting. Okay, move to adjourn the meeting at 9:11 PM to our next meeting, which is scheduled for June 3rd.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.